Yes.
Is that correct?
Seven.
Six and seven.
We're ready then?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to welcome you to the St. Louis County Planning Commission Virtual Public Hearing. This meeting is for the purpose of hearing presentations on petitions for rezoning or requests for special procedure permits. I'm Wayne Hills and I'm Chairman of the Commission. In addition to the other members of the Planning Commission, we'd like to introduce Gail Cho, Acting Director of Planning, and on line the other planners assigned to tonight's petition. The Commission will not make a decision on petitions heard this evening. Normally, the Commission will receive staff reports and make a decision on tonight's petition at the next executive meeting on July 13. Additional comments, letters, and petitions submitted to the Department of Planning within two weeks of this meeting will be distributed to the Planning Commissioners in their executive meeting agenda packet. If additional information is required, the decision may be delayed. The Planning Commission's recommendations will then be forwarded to the County Council, who has responsibility for the final decision. The meeting will observe the following guidelines. Planning Department staff will show photos of the petition site. Then the petitioner will present the request. He or she will be allotted 15 minutes. Then persons in favor of the request will speak. After that, persons in opposition or with concerns. Each speaker will be allowed five minutes. Please note, you may only speak one time. To indicate you wish to speak, click the raised hand icon to the right of your name on the participant list. Please keep your remarks brief and avoid repetitive or seconding presentations. After all opposition speakers have spoken, only the petitioner will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal to answer questions and points raised by other speakers. And with that, we'll hear tonight's first petition, which is PC-07-20, May Commercial Properties.
So this site is located in South St. Louis County, on the west side of Tesson Ferry Road, also known as Highway 21, south of Walden Ridge Drive. You can see on the aerial here, it's east of where Tesson Ferry Road does intersect and cross the Merrimack River. So I'm going to show some site photos. This is the intersection of Walden Ridge Drive, looking south along Tesson Ferry Road. The subject site is located sort of where this monument sign for the Walden Ridge subdivision is. You can see our public hearing notice as well. This is looking north along Tesson Ferry Road, and then south into the site. And so you'll see in the inset map, the red star sort of indicates where I was when I was taking the picture. So Walden Ridge Drive is behind me in this photo. And then this is sort of the corner where that monument sign was. So you can see the existing parking lot and then Tesson Ferry Road on the left side. This is looking down Walden Ridge Drive. So the Concord Baptist Church is the structure on the far side of the road you see here. There is the church and their monument sign as well. This is on the subject site, the parking lot. I'm still sort of towards Tesson Ferry. So Walden Ridge Drive is to the right on this photo. Moving a little further into the site, you can see there is a retaining wall in the grassy portion of the site, but most of it is developed with the parking lot. This is looking south at the retaining wall I mentioned, so the Concord Church is behind me. And then this photo is taken from sort of the entrance to the Walden Ridge subdivision, looking back out towards Tesson Ferry Road. And then this photo and the next photo are showing the homes in Walden Ridge subdivision. So Chris, I'm going to make you a presenter now.
Okay.
So you will be able to share your screen.
Great. Thank you, Mel. Appreciate the opportunity to show you what we do. And if you can let me know if you can see my screen.
We can see you.
Do you see my presentation?
Down at the bottom of the screen, there's a box with an upward pointing arrow.
Okay.
So you'll click that, and then you'll click... A window will pop up that shows where your PowerPoint is.
So down at the bottom of the screen?
Next to where your mute and video buttons are.
Oh, okay.
Click content, and then the PowerPoint. And then go ahead and introduce yourself again, please.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I think I have it now. So... Thank you, my name's Chris May. I'm the owner of May Dental Arts, as well as May Commercial Properties. What we are, we're a full-service dental laboratory that kind of serves the St. Louis market, but we also have a clientele outside of town as well. What we're looking to do is kind of move into a newer facility. We've been in our current facility for probably about nine years now. We're located out in Jefferson County. And what I can do is I can show you a little bit right there. So our current building, as you can kind of see in that little picture there, we are about 10,500 square feet in our current facility. We've been in business for 16 years. Nine of those years, we've been in Jefferson County. But when I first started out, I was in St. Louis County, and we just needed more space, and we found this building down the road off of Highway 30. We have about 40 team members that work with us. And we're primarily just Monday through Friday, you know, 6:00, 7:00 a.m. till about 5:00 p.m. We're closed for all major holidays and all that good stuff as well. Like I said, we're looking to build a new facility somewhere between maybe 15,000 to 18,000 square feet. The additional space, what we're looking for, is to kind of focus a little bit on our educational programs that we do from time to time. We probably host maybe, oh, probably one program a quarter, so about maybe four programs a year. We also do need some additional office space and meeting space for our team members, and then a specialized area for our 3D printing that we're heavily involved in. My current facility, I cannot expand it due to, we have a main water line going down the parking lot, and we just can't build over it. Our company is a very normal company. We can pretty much work in like a large office building or something like that, but meaning we don't generate any noise, and we don't really generate any chemical odors or anything like that. So we're, we're pretty quiet. So just a little bit about who we are. From time to time, we'll see patients, you know, during the week, they'll stop by for like a shade match or a color match, but that's the extent of it. So we're not open to the public. We are private, and we generally don't see people coming in and out of our facility unless they have an appointment, or they're a vendor, or something like that. Some of the equipment we have, we have some CNC machinery, as well as a lot of 3D printing. We run a very clean operation. We're a medical device manufacturer. So we do need to fall within certain regulatory guidelines as far as, you know, how things are kept and how things are clean. We do a lot of design work, a lot of CAD work. So we have a lot of graphic artists that work for us, some engineers. We have some extremely talented people. We still do a lot of things by hand, but a lot of it is digital as well. So very detailed work, very small items that we're making. Of course, we're making teeth, so they're not very large. And then just, you know, pretty interesting work that we do. We're kind of a hidden industry, not too many people know about us. And we really don't want a lot of publicity either, because we're just, we work for doctors and specialists and oral surgeons. We do not work with the general public at all. So we are required by law to work with either the dentist, or the specialist, or oral surgeon. One thing that we do is, you know, we tend to work very closely with our clients. Aesthetics is very important to us. So our facility is very important to us as well. We need something that looks very aesthetic, very appealing. The other important factor that is important to us is how we blend in with the community. We're looking to build something very pleasing and aesthetic. The nice thing is, we've been working with the church. You know, Rusty and the rest of the group there have been very helpful. We want to involve the neighborhood behind us as well, as far as like the overall design, colors, landscaping, stuff like that. We want to be an extremely good neighbor. We feel we are a great neighbor where we're at now and all the other places we've been. We've, this is our third move since we started 16 years ago. So we just start growing, and then outgrow our facility, and then find another one. And like I said, we've been in our facility for about now, and we own our facility. So it's time to think about building a brand-new one, which is, which is very exciting for us. But more importantly, we really want to be a good neighbor. So we're looking for input from the subdivision, as well as the church. You know, make sure the colors are, you know, nice and, you know, appealing to, to everybody. I know you can't please everyone, but again, we're just looking to be good neighbors. Just more of our team members, a little bit about our work. We do a lot of 3D printing. Some of the technology is changing really fast. We're excited about it, we embrace it. I didn't know how long I would have tonight, so I kept my presentation very short. So, but, you know, as far as questions or anything like that, we see building just a single-level, you know, facility, mostly brick and stone. We thought about like the roofline and, you know, how that would blend into the surrounding area. And we felt that it would be probably better to have like some sort of like residential type of roofing. So no, no metal roofing, no solar panels or anything like that on there. Again, all this would fly underneath, you know, the St. Louis County ordinances and all that stuff. But just for generalities, we're not looking to build like a multi-level building or anything like that. We tend to kind of hug closer to Tesson Ferry. We'd like to reuse the parking lot, obviously update it, and, you know, get it structurally sound in some areas that are deficient. You know, if anything, the property is a little bit large for, for our use, but we like that. We like having the extra green space and having, you know, more of a barrier around us, so... I can turn it back over to you, Mel. Is there any other questions or anything I failed to cover? But again, I just want, I really want to think the residents actually, I do have a letter. If I could somehow try to pull that up here real quick, if you don't mind.
Yeah, I think you would do it the same way as how you chose the PowerPoint. You would just share content and then just open that document.
Okay, that sounds great. Can you see the letter here?
Yeah, we can see that.
Okay, so essentially, I was invited to sit in on a homeowner's meeting for Walden Ridge. I was able to meet many of the homeowners that live back there, and really had an opportunity to get to know them and for them to get to know me. I put on a presentation for them at the church as well. Fantastic folks, and, you know, I, as a homeowner myself, it's like, we're all concerned what goes in our backyard. We don't want a lot of, you know, distractions or, you know, traffic or anything like that. I feel we are a very minimal impact to the area. Again, we're very quiet, we're just Monday through Friday, generally 7:00 to 5:00, 6:00 to 5:00, somewhere around there, depending. But what we have found that, you know, currently, we're located in county, so for tax purposes and all that stuff, we would be St. Louis County again. You know, we don't really have any, you know, crazy restrictions or anything like that. But I just wanted to share with you, the subdivision wrote us a really nice letter, thanking us for the presentation, but then also saying that they seem to be in favor of the project. And we're kind of happy to see somebody do something with the property.
Okay.
Thank you. I'll turn this back over to you guys.
Yeah, at this time, any commissioners have any questions?
Wayne, Keith Taylor.
Go ahead, Keith.
Question of... How many square feet is this building going to be again?
We see about 15,000 to 18,000 square feet. We're currently in about 10,500.
I'm assuming you're going to use a local trained workforce to build the, the building?
Oh, most definitely, yes.
Wayne, Bill Bellin, I have one, Keith is finished.
Go ahead, Bill.
Okay, the lighting, do you, I don't have any additional lighting around your building?
Just general-purpose lighting, whatever is required, you know, for ordinance and that sort of thing. And, you know, that's a great question. We don't really have a monument that we need to advertise. I mean, we, you know, we have a small sign now, but again, we'd rather kind of be, you know, low-key, because we're not really open to the public or anything like that.
Okay, that's signage, so you're not going to have any big, large signage? And the lighting, you don't need any extra lighting around there? I guess because you're not going to work a night, or?
Yeah, whatever's required for the parking lot, whatever St. Louis County requires, and then, you know, a couple lights on the building, you know, for whatever's required by code.
How about your deliveries? Are you going to have any deliveries, and what time would they be, and?
Yeah, so we, again, we utilize UPS and FedEx and US Mail, which, which all run through both the church and the subdivision back there. I think pretty much everybody is Amazon Prime these days. We, we utilize UPS as well. They come once in the morning where we're at, and then once in the afternoon.
MSD has some concern about easements, future easements. Have you guys gotten that far yet?
We have not. We did look up where the lateral sewer lines were, where we could tap into. They're close by. You know, I told them approximately what size we're looking at, fixtures and stuff like that. They seem to feel that the line is more than adequate to handle us, you know, for as little as use that we are. We're not like a restaurant or running heavy dishwashers or anything like that, or laundry facilities or anything like that. So our, our use is not, not extreme.
Okay, so the parking that you're going to use, I guess you're, I don't know if you guys work overtime or not, but would those lights be shown on the people, the properties around there?
You know, that's a great, that's a great question. So, you know, we would be working with the subdivision, as well as with the church. I would think the existing lighting that's on there now, just in the area, will be far brighter than what we would ever really need. One of the residents, when I first met them, they asked me about a fence, and I said, "Well", personally, I really don't care for fences very much, but I said, "We would rather contain the area with a natural barrier, like a berm and trees for the household that lives right up..." Yep. If you could go back one slide, Mel, that would be great. But there's, there's these residents back here, right here, these, these residents right here. One of them, I think, inquired about a fence, and I said, "Well, I'd rather put a protective tree line right here to block out your view of anything of our building or anything like that." Unless they prefer a fence, then we'll do a fence. But I, personally, I'd rather look at, you know, trees and shrubs versus, versus a fence. But, you know, that's, that's just a way for us to work with the neighbors, you know, whatever looks best, since they'll be, you know, looking at that, so...
Okay, you didn't get my notes, did you?
No, I didn't, why?
Oh, you were answering the question, nice question. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, wonderful.
Anyone else? Gail? Is Gail there?
Yes, she's here.
On the fence versus trees, is that not an option on commercial up against residential?
The zoning ordinance requires a site fence to screen parking. So it depends how he has his building oriented. We don't have a site plan showing this, that it's building and parking location, but the fence requirement is to screen the parking, so it just would depend. But typically, in commercial, on the, on commercial sites, there is perimeter landscape required, no matter what, if it's along the street or if it affects residential. So it's probably a combination.
If, if I could comment quickly on that, we're not looking to put any parking back there near the residence. The parking's going to remain where it's at now. And if anything, we're going to try to move the building, like I said, closer to Tesson Ferry to give more of a backyard to the building. So the, the property is, is larger than, it'll handle a much larger building than what we're proposing. But, you know, for us, we like the area, it's great for our team members. We all live, you know, around the area. And then all of our local doctors and accounts are in that kind of area as well. So if you can see where the grassy area is, that's where we're proposing the building. But obviously, that grassy area is much, much larger than, than the building we propose.
So the trees, they will not come down, they will stay there?
Exactly, yeah, no. There's, we don't see any reason to disturb any, you know, trees existing, or the wall that's there. The wall, wall's very well done and it looks great, so we don't see an issue for that.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none? Mel, you want to do the public comment procedures?
Okay. So if you would like to speak in favor of this request, please click the hand next to your name. That'll raise your hand, and then we'll call on you. We'll call your name as it appears on the list, and you can give your comment. Two minutes. Make sure you let us know if you're in favor or opposition. And then when you're finished, click your hand again to lower it. So we'll start with Scott Arndt. Go ahead, Scott, you're unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Over here?
Yeah.
Oh, oh, you're over here. There you go. So I live on the largest barrier of the new property he's talking about. You hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
And I know he, he hasn't discussed it, he spoke with us. I know he spoke with the subdivision and the church, but we have, this is all new to us, I don't know. But one concern that we would like to talk about is future development of the growth, the property in the county, and the ability for us to use that stoplight, which would possibly require a road easement in the front, which could be part of his parking lot, which would give us access to the light for future, for future buildings.
So are you in favor or in opposition? Or with concern?
Well, if he gives me the easement, I would be in favor.
Well, Walden Ridge Drive is a public... Oh, you're to the south? Oh, I see. I misunderstood you, sir.
At the largest border to his property.
I see.
He always talked to everybody around him. He's talked about, but he hasn't talked to us, which is fine.
We'll have him address that in his rebuttal. Okay.
Great.
Oh, Chris, we'll take all the comments, and then you'll do your rebuttal.
Very good.
So next will be Russell Wirt. Go ahead, Russell, you're unmuted.
Yes, thank you. We're requested that the Planning Commission vote in favor of the zoning change. Our reasons are as follows. Currently, the parcel of land in question is producing zero annual tax revenue for the county. Changing the zoning would allow this transaction to proceed, and transferring of ownership to a local business provide a new stream of revenue for the county. To not change the zoning and thus not allow this transaction to proceed would prevent any tax revenue from being generated. Changing the zone of the land, number two, allow the sale of land to benefit a thriving local business that supports high-end technical jobs. To not change the zoning and thus not allow this transaction to proceed would hamper the progress of this thriving local business. Number three, changing the zoning has met a high threshold of acceptability among the populace that would be most impacted by this change. Following entities are in favor of this transaction. Number one is Concord Church, which includes the congregation, leadership team, and the staff. It's in favor of the zoning change. Secondly, the Concord We School is in favor of this zoning, zoning change and the pending transaction. Thirdly, the Walden Ridge Homeowners Association is in favor of this and the pending transaction. And then, of course, May Dental Arts is in favor of this zoning change. To not change this zoning and thus not allow this transaction to proceed would ignore the concern and input of the populace that our elected leadership calls to represent. We also want to say that the change in zoning land would help mitigate against unsafe and often illegal activities that vacant lots tend to attract. Illegal parking, illegal dumping, drug sales, and among other activities often take place in such environments. Additionally, these lots can disrupt a neighborhood's sense of community and potentially lower property values. To not change the zoning and thus not allow this transaction to proceed runs the risk associated with vacant lots. Changing the zoning to aid in the sale of land would benefit the community in real but less tangible ways. Concord is committed to taking a portion of the proceeds of this land sale to use for the good of the community. Here are two key ways that Concord plans to invest in the community pending the land sale. First, it's a special needs ministry that, that ministers to families with special needs. Secondly, it's a doing-good campaign where Concord will take proceeds of this land and partner to help with other nonprofit organizations inside of our community. By not allowing this zoning change, this would severely hamper our ability to bring about these changes. Our final reason to consider the zoning change is because of the unique partnership that could be formed through this process. Concord Church sees this moment as a prized opportunity for three sectors of our community to come together in order to bring about a greater, long-term good for South County residents. The three partners are the local government, the leader, leadership in District 6, a local business, which includes May Dental Arts, and the local church. We are asking the planning committee and the zoning council to give thoughtful consideration as to how this project will bring, bring a greater good for our citizens. And they would consider the risk and missed opportunities by keeping the zoning unchanged. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Next will be Norma Nisbet. Norma, you're unmuted now to give your comments.
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay, thank you, good evening. My name is Norma Nisbet, I am a resident at Walden Ridge, and I did attend the presentation previously that was with the church and with our subdivision. And we've always had a good relationship with the church. But the current plan, and you, seems to be very reasonable, and by its nature, not to be too invasive or intrusive to our peaceful neighborhood. However, I have concerns, and my concern is, should the May business itself ever close, move, or sell, then this opens the door for other more intensive commercial uses for that site, because the C6 commercial zoning would be in place. And at that time, then we, the subdivision ownership, would have no recourse whatsoever as to what type of business would be allowed there, as long as it fell under C6. And there are a lot of businesses that are much more intensive than the Mr. May's development. So I would ask that if the C6 is granted for the May development, that the following considerations be given, do, you know, due process and, and give some thought to some deed restrictions that could be applied to the property or to the site. That one, it would be limited to, the height be limited to a single story? That B, the limit, the building size to the existing building plan approved with no additions? No other additional buildings would be allowed on the site? Or that future commercial businesses, if allowed there, would be of a less intensive use? I think this would help save us the worrying about our, our futures. If something happens and this business is gone, there's no guarantees as to what kind of business would be allowed in there once this has the full C6 zoning. of business would be allowed in there once this has the full C-6 zoning. So I would ask that this be given due consideration and to assist in helping to maintain the neighborhood values that we have worked to build and develop. Thank you.
Okay, next is Michelle Arnt. Michelle, you're unmuted now.
Hi, my name's, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name's James Arnt, and Michelle is in family. We are the Arnt subdivision. My son Scott just talked to you a few moments ago in regards to our property line adjoining this property. We're the largest property line adjoining this property. We have some 16 acres here in total in the Arnt subdivision. And the concern, positive or negative, is not, is not a relevant thing here necessarily. The concern is that we would like to see in the design of, it's going to be going there, if the board sees fit to allow this to happen in the residential subdivision area. We'd like to see that there's a stubb street, that part of the parking lot, main drive into the parking lot, becomes a stubb street up against our property line. Now, this was done across the street, directly across the street from our present entrance on 21 some years ago on Hegeman Point Drive. Hegeman Point Drive developed the subdivision down to a point where there was a piece of property left adjoining 21, and the county planning and zoning elected to tell the builder to make that a stubb street. So as that property sold and got developed, it wouldn't be another curb cut on the state road, Highway 21, right next to a controlled intersection. So they did that. It worked out fine. So we're looking for the design to include that main road into his parking lot up against our little berm that we have there on our property line to stubb there. And that stub would then, at some point, if we develop this, if the 16 acres gets developed by us or whomever, we have, we had access to that controlled intersection vis-a-vis Walden Ridge Drive. The access we have now on Highway 21 is directly across from where you would see on your map, Hegeman Point Drive, and it's a very low-volume access to, at the moment, two homes on that 16 acres. So I think in, under the guise of orderly development, which is typically used in this situation, that the design would include that, what I've discussed there. It wouldn't be a burden on the owner in his development, because he'd have to put that main thoroughfare into his parking lot anyway. So it would just be a matter that we would have access to use if we see fit to have this developed into a point where having 32 homes or 64 homes or whatever is allowed under the zoning at some point in time. So that's my comment. It's not to be a positive or negative. It's what you see fit to do to the property in terms of changing the zoning or adding, as a previous caller called, adding those restrictions as to future use. I can see her point there, one of the future, the potential of marijuana testing facility. More than any one of us would agree that they have that in our backyard, but nevertheless, there's a lot of potential there for future use. Developing it further, making the edifice bigger, so on in future use, I would hope we would continue, we could make that part of it also. So that's my comment in a neutral way.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any other members of the public who would like to speak in favor or opposition to this request? Otherwise, we will move to the petitioner's rebuttal.
Seeing none, Mr. May?
Thank you. Again, thank you, everybody, for your time tonight. Just to kind of walk through a few things, I made some notes. You know, the neighbors to the left of the property there, Scott and James and Michelle, one thing that we're trying to do is we're trying to hug as close as we can to Teson Ferry to give us even more of a buffer to the residents on Walden Ridge. So as we embark down that planning process, we'll be looking at every possibility to, you know, to accommodate everybody, but we're really trying to get that building as close as we can. I don't know if there'd be room. We would have to kind of take a look at that. And I apologize, we haven't met prior to this, but thank you for calling in. The other resident in Walden Ridge for future use and everything like that, you know, even though the property's there, if we should ever sell it, vacate it, or whatever, I believe it just still falls underneath San Luis County to approve, you know, which businesses could move in there. You know, if somebody tears the beautiful building that we're thinking down, it'd be heartbreaking, but if they would do that, they would have to go through, you know, San Luis County and all that. You know, as far as like, you know, we do plan on just a single story. We do not want a multiple story. We want to kind of blend into the surrounding area. Again, we want to mimic more of a residential feel, so a double, two-story, it's not anything we would want to do. Actually, our business could not even use it, to be honest with you. But again, thank you for all the questions and concerns. I'm available further to discuss, but I appreciate everybody's time tonight, and I'll keep it short because I know everybody's busy. But thank you again. And again, I really want to thank the residents of Walden Ridge as well as the church. They have been just some of the most incredible people we have met. They've been extremely helpful, along with San Luis County. We just appreciate your considerations and what we're trying to do here. Again, thank you, and I appreciate your time.
Okay. Any commissioners with any questions?
This is Bill Wayne. I don't know if he-
Go ahead, Bill.
I don't know if he would be the one to address the stubb street or would that San Luis County be doing that? Their property?
So this is all new to us. We didn't really realize that there's an interest in connecting the properties. We didn't really plan on that, so we would need to sit down with everybody and, you know, kind of discuss that. But like I said, we're really trying to hug as close to Teson Ferry as possible, just to give enough green space and everything between, you know, Walden Ridge and ourselves. But, you know, I'm not sure if there would be physical room to do that. I know we got that big-
I don't think he was asking for it. I think he was saying, I don't think he wanted that. He wanted to prevent curb cuts. I thought I heard him say it.
Yeah, we'll just have to explore that with the residents there.
Gil, was that a highway call?
Are we on?
Yeah, you're on.
Yeah. It's not proposing any connection to properties to the south at this time, as we said, and there's no formal request from the county transportation department or Moda for a street connection of any sort. The property owners to the south just, you know, came to the meeting tonight and expressed that interest and concern, and the two property owners or entities could certainly discuss that, but that is not a requirement in San Luis County at this time.
How about the stoplight? There was a stoplight issue that Scott mentioned, you know. I don't know if this gentleman could address that, or is that San Luis County doing that also? Or the highway department?
Walden Ridge Drive and Teson Ferry, and there's a signal now.
Yeah, at Walden Ridge Drive and Teson Ferry, that's where the signal is. And the property owners themselves were just trying to get access to get through the petitioner's property so that they could get to that traffic light. That was their expressed concern.
Okay.
So we'll, you know, they certainly can continue talking, and they can let us know how their, what their discussion is, but we'll discuss that a little bit in our prepared report for you also.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners? Seeing none, that concludes this petition, and we will go on to PC 08-20, San Luis County Planning Commission. Thank you, Mr. May.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. This is Doug May, and I'll be presenting the site photos for this particular site. So this is located on the west side of Hawkins Road. It's to the west of Rockwood Summit High School. It's to the north of the subdivision that ends at Greenville Court. So this is looking north. At the site, it's two vacant home sites on the north side of Greenville Court. This is looking west along Greenville Court. You can see the vacant lots there in the center of the photo. And then this is looking east along the same street. And then this is at the far northern property line, and this is looking to the parcels to the north of these vacant lots. That is East Branch Road, which has a couple single-family residences located along it. It's a private street. This is looking south from that same point through the vacant subdivision lots. This is looking west along East Branch Road, looking east along the road. This is further east, looking northeast as the road kind of curves to the north. And Debbie will explain the specifics of this application.
Good evening, commissioners. As you know, I'm Debbie Slumberg with the San Luis County Department of Planning. This is, this is pretty much PC 08-20 actually goes along with the, and is closely involved with the pub informational hearing for PC 9903, which is the next item on your agenda. So I'm going to discuss both of those. You may recall that PC 26 and 2718, Rouse Development LLC, was a request for a change of zoning from non-urban to R2 residence district with a PEU for 35 single-family residences. And that was going to be in the area that, as Doug mentioned, is outlined in red on the map in front of you. Subsequently, the commission recommended approval of R1A 22,000 square foot zoning with a PEU for 35 single-family residences on this 18-acre tract of land. The county council approved the ordinances, rezoning the property, and authorizing the PEU. It was determined during site plan, site development plan preparation, that the developer cannot develop the PEU as proposed, and the developer, Rouse Development LLC, no longer has the property under contract. The developer, who is also the petitioner, has requested that the PEU be terminated. Termination of the PEU will necessitate the reversion of the zoning to the original zoning classification of non-urban. The purpose of this hearing is to revert the zoning of the property back to non-urban. Termination of the PEU will result in the 11 acres being zoned non-urban district and future development limited to the non-urban district requirements of a minimum three-acre lots for single-family homes and other low-intensity uses such as farming and other agricultural uses. If the PEU authorized via PC 2718, Rouse Development LLC is terminated, the access to this area, which was proposed as an extension north from Greenville Lane, an extension of Summers End Lane, is not necessary and is, in fact, inappropriate. The purpose of the informational hearing tonight is to review the appropriateness of authorizing homes to be built on the lots platted as part of the original Estates at Summer Chase addition record plat. This will necessitate an amendment to the PEU ordinance for Estates at Summer Chase Edition subdivision to add back the two lots that were removed when we approved the PEU development via PC 26 and 2718. The permitted number of lots in Estates at Summer Chase would be increased from the current 45 to the original 47 lots. This will result in an amendment to the PEU ordinance for PC 9903, Rouse Company. I'm sorry if this is so complicated, so if any of the commissioners have questions, I'd be happy to try to answer those now.
Okay. Anyone?
Debbie, this is Bill Sneed. Or did I understand correctly that the first part of this proposal is to revert all, which is shown on the first layout, back to non-urban?
Yes, everything that's outlined in red, shown on the slide that's on the screen now, would be rezoned back from what is now R1A back to non-urban, three-acre residential zoning. All 18 acres.
Unfortunately, I don't have the copy of the rest.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. This is-
Is it the entire amount on that drawing that is shaded?
Yes, sir, it is. For PC 0820, it is the entire area that's shaded.
Okay, that's fine. I, thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one, we were going to public comments.
Right, so we're going to hear from Ed from the Rouse Company. Let me unmute him.
But just to make clear, we're doing 0820 and 9903 together.
Correct.
All right.
Ed, you can go ahead and make your statement.
You guys can hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening. Yeah, unfortunately, we were unable to make the project work out. We no longer have the three parcels that are highlighted under contract. So that's why we're requesting the, I guess it's a revocation of the approved PEU, and then the re-establishment of the two lots that were vacated to access there so we can finish out the community Summer Chase states.
Pretty simple. Questions, commissioners? Seeing no one. Mel, you want to take it to public comments? See, we can't hear.
I do.
You hear? I can't hear.
I've got a comment.
Who's been lost there?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
I can't hear her. I see a lift moving.
Guys, I'm sorry. I was muted. Jeff, I unmuted you, Jeff. I apologize.
Okay, no problem. Just to let you know, I'm 100% in- Because you approved the Chase.
Jeff, you're sort of cutting in and out.
Yeah, the Summers End is just enough for two cars to go down, and that project would have added way too much traffic. So I'm 100% for your proposal.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Appreciate your comments.
Next will be Charles Moes. Charles, you're unmuted.
Thank you. We're the property owners at 1868, the right third of that property there, right third of that area, and we're looking forward to it being reverted back to NU as well.
Okay, thank you.
Let me just check. Oh, yes. Which one is she? She's gone now. She's not there anymore.
Yeah.
There is a question from Mr. and Mrs. Nick Doshi that says, how will the traffic be routed in this area? Since there's no new proposal, Summers End Lane would terminate as it does now and lead back out to Summer Chase Lanes and Hawkins.
Three lots. We're continuing to back to Summers End.
The three lots will-
The three lots will continue to have access on each east branch like they do now. East Branch is a private road that is substandard and only lots that are three acres in size or greater would be, would normally be allowed access on this, to be served from this property, from this road.
So we'll do one more call for comments. I don't see any other hands raised, but if you would like to speak, please click the hand next to your name. I don't see any new, new hands, Wayne.
Okay. Do we need rebuttal here?
I don't think so.
Okay. Commissioners, have anything to add? Seeing none, this concludes this petition, or petitions. And with that, we need a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion.
Second motion.
Yeah, Ballard, make the motion.
Keith Taylor, second motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Foes? Eyes have it, 7-0, and we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.